We will now call this meeting to order. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here. Good evening to all of you. Today, we will begin with a roll call, starting with District One.
Deandre Knoxon, District One.
Keith Love, District Two.
Elmo Bowie, Commissioner-at-Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
All right, thank you very much. Let the record reflect that a quorum has been established. We do have six of the seven commission members present, and we will have our invocation at this time. We're happy to have with us today Pastor Terry Melinkon of the Come and See Friends Church. Thank you Pastor Melinkon for being here with us. And then we will follow that up with the pledges led by Commissioner Deandre Knoxon.
O most gracious and heavenly Father, how we thank you for this blessed day that you've given us, for the strength and activity of our limbs, but more importantly, for keeping us in your perfect peace today. Thanking you Father God for this council, for the board, for the members that are here, the people. I thank you Father God for giving the wisdom to every member on the board for, to be able to do what they're doing, to be able to run this city and to govern it in a godly, like manner. And we give you the glory, the honor, and the praises in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Please, all in prayer.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Pastor Melinkon, thank you again for that invocation. If you have any announcements from your church that you would like to share with the citizens of Texas City, residents, you can do so at this time.
I'll just take a minute of folks' time. My church, what we do is, we're not a large church, but what we do is during this last freeze that we had and other freezes, whenever there's a freeze, we invite all the individual personnel that are on the streets, we bring them into a warming center. We feed them, we clothe them, we house them for as long as the time is that we have a cold spell. We also have what is known as a, it's called chat too, but we bring them in everywhere, every second Saturday. So we are meeting the needs of the community, those that are not going to church. And we are also discipling and giving them hope. So that's what we do.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Located at 1701 Sixth Street South.
North.
North.
North, that's all right. Right around the corner from the church where the warming center was. Thank you so much. Come and See Ministries has been a great asset to the, to the community of Texas City. We now are up to proclamations and presentations. We have two proclamations to, to present on today. The first one I'd like to present is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. That is the month of April. And it reads as follows. Whereas the month of April is nationally recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, S A A M, a time to raise public awareness about sexual violence and to educate communities on how to prevent it. And whereas the Resource and Crisis Center of Galveston County provides vital services to survivors of sexual violence, including advocacy, crisis intervention, legal and medical accompaniment, therapy referrals, and prevention education. And whereas the R C C G C's work empowers survivors and strengthens our community by promoting safety, healing, and justice, while also equipping individuals with knowledge and resources to prevent future harm. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an opportunity for individuals, organizations, and communities to join in a shared commitment to supporting survivors and fostering a culture of consent, respect, and accountability. And whereas the City of Texas City stands with survivors of sexual violence and acknowledges the importance of addressing the root causes of sexual assault through education, community engagement, and systemic change. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, and on behalf of this city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Texas City and encourage all residents to support the efforts of R C C G C and stand united against sexual violence in our community. In testimony whereof witnessed my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on the 16th day of April 2025, as is signed by myself, Dedrick Johnson is mayor and attested by our city secretary, Ms. Ramari Lee. And I think today we have some representatives here from, come on up, from the Resource and Crisis Center of Galveston County. Congratulations. Yes, thank you for spreading awareness. This is on behalf of the city. Thank you very much. You can add key words to the podium if you'd like.
Thank you so much. Hi, hey, thank you so much. My name is Jessie Rhodes. I work for the Resource and Crisis Center of Galveston County. We are your only domestic violence and sexual assault service center in all of Galveston County. I'm our community outreach specialist. So my job is to actually go out into the community, teach prevention education, and bring awareness to our ladies also within our shelter. So we do have a 53 to 58 bed shelter, but since COVID, we have been consistently full, you guys. In the state of Texas, about 6.3 million people will face some form of sexual assault. And I like to phrase that as, think of the city of Houston and add 2 million, unfortunately.
No, no.
I'm sorry, guys. I thought I heard somebody. I also like to mention that Texas actually has a worse national average or has a worse average than the national average. So in the United States, it's one in five, but in Texas, it's two in five. So it's important for us to bring awareness not only to adults in our community, but also kids, because we do know that social media, having our kids, start to date younger, so we need to see each of them younger. And thank you guys so much. As a resident of Texas City myself, it's absolutely wonderful to see our mayor, our councilmen's, being a part of this process, because it takes every single member of our community to face this issue, make sure that we're not ignorant about it, because unfortunately perpetrators look for ignorant communities. So if you can, educate yourself, learn one fact, pass it on to 10 more people, and I promise you guys, we will make a difference. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Very well said, I appreciate you. Also, our next proclamation is to acknowledge Records and Information Management Month. Whereas Records and Information Management Month observed each April highlights the importance of properly organizing, maintaining, and safeguarding records and data in both public and private sectors. Whereas over time, the recognition of Records and Records and Information Management Month has grown from a single day to a month-long global initiative that emphasizes the value of accurate, timely, and secure records in today's digital and paper-based environments. And whereas efficient records management strengthens organizational performance, ensures compliance with laws and regulations, protects personal and institutional privacy, and preserves vital information for historical and operational continuity. And whereas, the City of Texas City acknowledges and appreciates the work of records and information professionals who diligently maintain the systems and practices that allow governments, businesses, and citizens to thrive through responsible information stewardship. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, and on behalf of this city commission, do hereby proclaim this month of April as Records and Information Management Month, also known as R I M M, R I M M. In the City of Texas City and encourage all departments, organizations, and individuals to observe this month by promoting sound records and information management practices that enhance transparency, accountability, and service. In testimony whereof witnessed my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on the 16th day of April, myself, Mayor Dedrick Johnson, and attested by our city secretary, Ms. Ramari Lee. I want to present this proclamation on Records and Information Management Month to our records manager, Ms. Renee Edgar. Do you want to have a few words about Records Management Month?
Thank you, Renee.
Not at all. Thank you for all you do, appreciate your help. All right. Also, this is a time where we have some service awards to give people who have reached certain milestones. Service award to our police officer, Michael Kellerman, 10 years. Appreciate him for his service. And we have Nicholas Plantagen of Public Works, also 10 years. And then we have Jose Ramos of the Bayou Golf, 20 years. So we want to thank all of those individuals for their. At this time, we're up to reports. We will have a report from our Community Development Department, our Community Development Annual Report from Ms. Titilio Smith, our Director of Community Development and Grants Administration.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you watched me before, you know I'm going to fight with this, so just bear with me. So today we are doing the Program Year 23 Annual Report, and you're saying, it's 2025. Why are you doing that, Titilio? And it's because we are funded by the federal government and we go according to program years, which runs from October 1st to September 30th. And so last year, we just finished up Program Year 23, and so that's what I'm going to be reporting about today. See what I told you?
Finger, slow.
Okay, so we are currently operating under the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and the P Y 23 Annual Plan for the purposes of this report. The 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan ends at the end of this program year, which would be September 30th, 2025. So we're actually in the process right now of writing the next five-year consolidated plan, and we really need everyone's input. So please watch the website and any other announcements about public comment requests. We really want to know what everybody thinks about our activities in community development. So in that com plan, we had goals of expanding public facilities, modernizing and repairing public housing buildings, providing supportive services and employment for youth, preventing slum and black bite, improving facades, housing reconstruction, and to improve the condition of housing stock. And so our goal of, for the annual plan, which is the plan required for each year of the consolidated plan. So for P Y 23, we had an annual action plan with goals of providing housing assistance, housing reconstruction, improving condition of housing stock, and improving presentation of low-to-mod areas. We decided to drop provide supportive services and employment for youth, because the city is funding that activity and not the grant. See? And under provided housing assistance, we had the First Time Home Buyer Program. Now during that time, the interest rates were so high that we could not qualify anyone for that program. So we put it on hold. Hopefully, rates will go down sometime in the near future to where we can get more eligible applicants, and then we will open it back up again. And this is the fun part. Housing reconstruction, the housing rehabilitation and reconstruction program. So, you know, I got, kind of got ahead of myself, but I'm only reporting for P Y 23. So the goal was to rebuild one home, owned and occupied by a low-to-moderate income household. We actually had two houses that were in pre-construction phase during that program year, and two houses that were beginning construction. And I say I was jumping ahead, because we finished three of the five overall houses and have moved in those three families. Also, we had a goal to rehabilitate 20 owner-occupied single-family homes, and we were able to complete 12 of them. We also had some still in process. It's always ongoing. The housing rehabilitation program is our most desired program. And so we try to get as many done as we can, but the problem that we have is that there are not a lot of contractors that are applying to work with us. So again, if you go to the city's website under Community Development, under Housing Rehabilitation, there is a page for contractors where you can find the link to apply to work with us in doing this work. And then to improve the presentation of low-to-mod areas, we have the program Keep Texas City Beautiful. We are an official affiliate of Keep Texas Beautiful, which is an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful. For Program Year 23, our goal was to affect 775 residents in LMI areas. We have held the Great American Cleanup and the Fall Sweep every year now since, I believe, 2022 or 2023. That year, we had the Great American Cleanup on May 5th. We collected 456 pounds of trash with 42 volunteers. And then the Fall Sweep was held on October 5th, which is technically the new program year. But we just wanted to give it an honorable mention. We collected over 350 pounds of trash with 25 volunteers. The homeless and other special needs activities, we addressed that with the Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness. We have started to have the Navigation Day once a year. We had this year 20-plus agencies that came out to assist us with 100 volunteers. We had 95 unsheltered and sheltered homeless citizens to complete surveys with us. Services provided included information and referrals, hygienic kits, warrant assistance from our municipal court, veteran services, emergency assistance, health and medical screenings, vaccines, salon services, lunch, and also hot showers. So that was a wonderful day. The people were really, really grateful for the services that we provided. And then we also, during that time, were working on the analysis of impediment to fair housing, which was a HUD requirement. And that was a process. We had to have different focus group meetings. We had to have public comment. We had a consultant, Intuitive Global Consulting, that came in and helped us research the data and came out with a great impediment to fair housing document that identifies seven impediments that the city can work on. And so we will be working on those impediments, removing them from the Community Development Department. Also, in terms of revitalization, we have the two target areas, which are two lowest-income areas in the city, the 1867 Settlement Historic District and the Greater Chelsea Manor area. So we have been doing the planning parts of these revitalizations. We partnered with the University of Houston School of Architecture and the Texas Southern University School of Public Affairs to kind of give us some ideas about what we should do in terms of revitalizing these two areas. And their recommendations that came back were just wonderful. Texas Southern even did a physical model Commissioner was looking at today in our office. It was just wonderful. So we're really looking forward to moving forward with revitalization in those areas. And then that said, this is the Community Development Team, myself and Patricia Mata. She couldn't be here this evening, but she is the program coordinator. If you call our office on a day-to-day basis, Patricia is going to help you with whatever it is that you need. We also have a great administrative assistant, and we have our rehabilitation specialist and inspector, Guy Eastberg. And we, we are just trying to get the good work done. If you have any questions, you can email us at communitydevelopment@texascitytx.gov or check us out on the web, texascitytx.gov under Community Development. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Smith?
I have a question. What do we have in place to oversee the construction work that has been conducted by the contractors that we utilize?
We have the Rehabilitation Specialist Inspector that we contract, that is responsible for overseeing the builders that we contract with to make sure that they are doing what is required by the plans. You're welcome.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Good job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're up to public comments. We do have one person who has submitted a request to address the commission. Mr. Wayne Dolcifino, you can make your way to the podium. Let me remind everyone who requests the, to address the commission, you have up to three minutes. You may introduce yourself and speak on your agenda item. Mr. Dolcifino, I see in your notes you wish to speak on Item 7D. That is the only agenda item that is eligible for your public comment. Item 7D.
Is that another rule, Mayor?
You have three minutes, up to three minutes.
Okay, well, an agenda says at the very top, agenda, so anything under that agenda is something I could talk about. I was going to congratulate Mr. Kellerman, Officer Kellerman, for his 10 years at the Police Department, which I think is a great achievement, especially since more than 30 officers have left the department in the last year and a half in this war on cops. By the way, my name is Wayne Dolcifino. I am president of Dolcifino Media, also the guy the mayor refers to as a social media terrorist, but I'll try to behave. The second item I want to talk about is the Zoom subscription. So my office uses Zoom, we record meetings, and we keep the recordings. And we keep the recordings, because we think it's important to have documentation of what exactly was said, so that later, when some, you know, nosy reporters start showing up, they can, you know, look at the videos of the Zooms. So I would urge the city commission, Mayor, that when you do this Zoom subscription, that you make sure that you record all your meetings so that they will be available under the Public Information Act.
Dolcifino, the screen is very sensitive that you're touching, and so it's messing up the display.
Oh, sorry, my paper?
Yes, sir, no problem.
Sorry, man. Technology is leaving me behind. And finally, and I didn't know it before the meeting started, but since it's Records Month, I would like to just leave by saying, give me the public records you're illegally withholding from me, or I'm going to sue you.
Thank you for your time. At this point, we will have the Consent Agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, you have before you of the commission, you have before you Consent Agenda Items 7A through D for your consideration. If there's any of these you'd like pulled for further discussion, you can do so at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to pull D.
Okay. 7D.
I move to approve Items A, B, C.
Second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve Consent Agenda Items 7A, B, and C, seconded by Commissioner Love. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mayor?
I'm sorry?
I think everyone voted. I didn't audibly hear everyone vote.
Okay, let's go ahead and take that vote again. All in favor of approving Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries. Unanimous approval. We have 7D that was asked to be pulled by Commissioner Garza to consider and take action on Resolution Number 2025-038, approving the purchase of a three-year annual subscription and the implementation of Zoom for government for a secure and compliant platform for virtual meetings and telecommunications. We will hear from our Finance Department relative to this. Is there any specific questions you had, Commissioner Garza?
Yeah, I don't quite understand the Zoom. I think we did something similar to this during COVID. We called it a Zoom. I don't know if this is the same thing or not. And then I understand that this amount of money, we, it's not budgeted this year, correct?
Correct.
So we're doing a budget amendment to get it in there.
Yeah, so this is Zoom for government. We actually have Zoom for non-government, and this will allow us to be in compliance with the regulations that the government requires. And the amount where, while it's not budgeted, we want to believe that we will have cost savings to cover it for this year, and then the subscriptions for year two and three will be budgeted at the according time. But this is for the payment for the one year, but the commitment for the three-year subscription.
I'm really glad we're doing this, but I always, as Commissioner, I always thought that when something wasn't on the agenda, when it's a certain amount of money, you had to have a budget amendment. I mean, I just recall that. We don't have to do it in this case.
Yeah, so as the new CFO, I have made the decision to bring budget amendments at the, towards the fourth quarter to see if there is a way that we can achieve cost savings to cover some of the unplanned expenditures, so to minimize and streamline the process for budget amendments. So what typically happens is that when you have a budget amendment, you, you pull from the, from your fund balance. And there may be, you pull from your fund balance for this unbudgeted item, but there may be an over-available budget and other line items in other departments. And so you inflate the budget for the next year when it rolls over, because you added this budget amendment. So what we want to do for budget, better budget management and being more fiscally responsible is to see towards fourth quarter where we are as a whole in the general fund to determine whether or not we need a budget amendment.
And this, this is, this is according to the government code. I don't know, yes, yes?
Yeah, it's best practice, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Motion to approve, item D.
Aye, second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve Agenda Item 7D, seconded by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we're at Item 8A. We will consider and take action on the second reading of Ordinance Number 2025-08, adopting recommended speed zones for FM 517 as recommended by TechDOT on the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation. We'll hear from our city engineer, Ms. Kim Golden.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. So this is your second reading. Again, the currently posted speed limit on 517 is 55 miles per hour. This will be change it to 50 miles per hour, and it's from the west city limit of Texas City to the intersection of State Highway 146, a distance of approximately 2.284 miles.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Any questions, Commissioners?
Motion to approve the second meeting, Mayor.
Second.
Second reading, I'm sorry.
No problem. Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve this ordinance on its second reading. It was seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we will have Item 8B, consider and take action on the second reading of Ordinance Number 2025-09, which adopts recommended speed zones for FM 517 as recommended by Texas Department of Transportation on the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation. Ms. Golden?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners. So this is the second reading of a speed limit posting on FM 519. It is based upon a study by TechDOT, which we had reviewed and concurrence from our own traffic engineering consultant, as was on 517 as well. I failed to mention it then. So the currently posted speed limit, so this is in three sections. And so there's a little bit of oddity about the way it's currently posted. In the first section, which is from the west city limit to Grant Avenue, it's posted eastbound 45 and westbound 50, and they're going to change that to 45 miles per hour in both directions. And then on 519, from Grant Avenue, about 1,895 feet west of the intersection of Loop 197, a distance of a little over a mile, it's currently posted 45 miles per hour eastbound and 50 miles per hour westbound, and they're going to change that to 50 miles per hour. And then FM 519, from the 1,895 feet west of the intersection of Loop 197 to the intersection of Loop 197. of Loop 197, a distance of approximately .359 miles, the speed limit's going to be 45 miles per hour. So, I don't know how it ended up being posted different on the two sides of the street. That is totally, just human error, we'll call it.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve everything she said.
I second whatever she said.
Boy, that's really good.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve these speed limit changes, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let me just say, do not speed in Texas City. The police will pull you over no matter who you are. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Including the mayor.
Including the mayor. That's right.
I got what you did.
All right, next item on the agenda, Item 8C, consider and take action on Resolution Number 2025-039, approving a bioaugmentation proposal, that's my big word for the week, for a three-year proposal and three additional, I'm sorry, let me say this, approving a bioaugmentation proposal for three-year proposal and three additional one-year proposal extensions with N-Pipe Technologies. That may or may not be accurate, but you can clarify, Jack, if that's.
Well, when you said bioaugmentation, right off the bat, I'm trying to put this in layman's terms. And if y'all have any additional questions, Corbin's going to be here to answer. What this is, Mayor, is this is a budgeted item that helps us stay in compliance with TCEQ in our sanitary sewer system. It consists of injecting a bacteria that is specifically designed to fit our sewer system. They inject those in 12, 12 or 13 numerous spots across our system, and it helps neutralize sewer gases in the system that can damage our pipes and our equipment. It also starts the treatment process before the sewage even gets to our treatment plant. So, this really helps keep our system running optimally. It also has a side effect of helping with odor control. The company that has been doing this work for us for the past probably 10 years is N-Pipe Technologies. We recommend, they've been doing a good job for us, keeping our system running good, and we recommend continuing that relationship with N-Pipe. So, if there's any, and I believe this is for a one-year contract. It's just a one-year contract, Mayor.
Okay. That's the part that I was confused about. So, yeah, it is a one-year contract with three additional one-year proposal extensions.
Yes, sir.
The initial contract is a one-year contract.
Yes, sir.
Any questions of the members of the Commission?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All right. A motion has been made by Commissioner Sharp to approve, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harrelson. Next, we're on Agenda Item 8D. We will consider and take action on Ordinance Number 2025-10, authorizing the correction of a spelling error by renaming Harbor Point Drive to Harbor Drive, to Harbor Point Drive. Note the difference in spelling. There are homophones and sound alike, but one has a U and one does not. Just trying to correct that for directional purposes, am I correct?
In a lot of reasons.
Lot of reasons, yes. So, we're going to have our City Engineer, Ms. Kim, explain this to us.
And I'll try to make it make sense, but just chalk it up to human error. Remire, can you pull the plat up? It's a very linked right there. So, this plat has already been recorded, and you'll see that at the, it's two pages. And so, at the bottom, at the very bottom, see Harbor Point Drive, and then go again, go again, keep going. And see, it continues on the next page. Oh, no, you did it. See how it continues on that next page? And it's spelled differently on the two pages. So, it's creating some confusion. It's already recorded, and we've already, some of the lots have been sold, and so, we can't do a plat amendment without, like, really getting complicated. So, y'all are the guys who can fix this by an ordinance changing the name of the street to the correct spelling, which is the one without the U. We're just using fewer letters. So, and this is waiving the three readings because we need it to go into effect immediately so we can quit having this problem of the two different spells. It's going to affect about 10 permits that we've already fixed. None of the certificated occupancies that have been issued so far have been with the U in them, which is another reason we're changing the spelling to the no U. So, if y'all could help us with this, we'll really appreciate it, and we'll try to do better next time.
Motion to approve, Mayor, this is.
I just want to know, what's the correct way to spell it? Is it acceptable both ways?
I believe it's acceptable both ways.
Okay.
We're just going with fewer letters.
Kind of French, don't it? Hall-broiler.
Which is like gray and gray.
I know.
Anyway.
I second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve this change, and seconded by Commissioner Bowie. Any further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last on 8E, Agenda Item 8E, consider and take action on Resolution Number 2025-40, approving the city of Texas City to enter into a contract with Lucas Construction, Inc. for the 19th Avenue, 16th Street covert replacement project. Mr. Jack Harrelson of Public Works.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This project, Commissioners, if y'all aren't aware, it's the 19th Avenue, right there at 16th Street. We've got a bunch of barrels sitting on the shoulder of the road. Those barrels are there because the edge of the underground culvert is failing, so we need to replace that. On the 19th of March, we accepted bids. We had five bids. The low bidder, after doing some, we hadn't heard of these guys before, neither had our, the contractor, neither had our engineer, after some research, we did not think that they had the qualifications to do the job. This is a very heavily-traveled road. It needs to happen without a hitch and as fast as possible, so we recommend going with Lucas Construction to get this done. It is, it's a bridge, even though it doesn't look like one, because it's, we've got stormwater going underneath it. It's a, it's a major hub. Anybody who's at City Hall or at the school across the street realizes how important that ditch is, and it goes underground right there at 13th Avenue, and it goes underground until the north side of 19th Avenue. So, that's the last little stretch. We have to, this has, this is a big deal for us, so we had to be comfortable with the contractor, and I recommend that we award it to the second lowest bidder, who we've done multiple work projects before. They've done a lot of storm sewer projects, Mayor, in the city for us, and they've done a great job, and we're confident with those guys.
Thank you, Jack. Any discussion, any questions?
This is grant-funded, isn't it?
I second. It is. Yes, sir, this is an American Rescue funded, American Rescue Plan-funded project. And even with Lucas's bid, they still came in under what we had budgeted for, for this particular project.
And second question, is that the location where those two deep holes are in the road on 16th Street?
It's.
On 19.
19. 19th Avenue. It's that.
Okay.
Right, 19th and 16th.
Okay.
19th Avenue, 16th Street ditch.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion has been made by Commissioner Knoxon to approve this item, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. Any further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. This time, we're up to Commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Knoxon. Do you have any comments?
No comment.
Commissioner Love?
Yeah, so, April 13th through the 19th is National Dispatch Week, so shout out to the 911 operators answering the phone when you call the police. So, I just want to give you guys a shout out, and I appreciate everything that you do.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Bowie?
I think Barbara White has left the building.
No, she's here, in the middle.
I'm here. Okay. So, I know she would want me to announce this. Texas City ISD Board of Trustees initiated a program called Together We Succeed, and they recognize various organizations that impact the school district, the students, the teachers, with supplies and everything that occurs. So, Barbara and her alliance group and Texas City Mainland Lions met last night to be presented with this recognition and felt pretty good.
Good. Well, and thank the Lions Club, Texas City Lions, and all the Lions around the mainland, Texas La Mar, mainland, for their contributions, and thank you for letting us know that the school district acknowledged them for their contribution. Commissioner Garza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I was looking for Nicole Miller. This past Saturday, they had the, oh, there she is, the 1947 explosion. It was a great job. It was very well organized. It was, it was very, it's always sentimental, but Texas City continues to move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sharp?
I agree with Abel. That was great. Great job. And also, I think it's pretty great, Public Works did what's going with the other bid because of their experience. That's important. It's good to know that you're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Clark?
Well, God bless Texas City today. We keep on going, don't we? Barbara had asked me to thank, I guess, Public Works for the new sidewalks that's by the old post office in that area. Am I right on that, Barbara?
No, they blacktopped everything. It's wonderful and smooth.
Thank you for that, okay, what she said.
Yeah.
And I just want to wish everybody a very happy and blessed Easter. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Everyone.
One more thing, I have to mention the Police Department. They always do a good job when they do the color guard presentation. It's really a good program. Thank you for doing that.
Great. Thank y'all very much. I would like to just kind of echo those sentiments a little bit. Today is April 16th, the actual day of the 1947 Texas City disaster, the largest industrial disaster in the nation. And we did pause this weekend and thank you again to Mr. Nicole Miller and Chief Harris of the Texas City Fire Department to commemorate that event. Those of you who know the history of it know that every member of the Texas City Fire Department, except one, perished in that disaster. And so, we always pause to remember them, and as Commissioner Garza said, the police officers as well for responding, and the entire city of Texas City. Many of us who've been lifelong residents of the city may even be descendants of survivors or survivors ourself. And so, kudos to our Communications Department, Ms. Jennifer Laird, for posting some very, very nostalgic, if you will, memorable reflections on the Texas City disaster from some survivors, as well as just allowing the citizens to understand that, how important that was to us. As a member of local industry, myself works in one of the local refineries, it's always an opportunity for us to pause and do a safety stand down and just think about all the different operations we have going on around us, that the processes have improved drastically over the years with technology, with policies, and so on and so on. But it still is something to reflect on. And if you don't mind, if you could just pause for a moment of silence in honor of over 575 people who lost their lives on that particular day. Thank you very much. And as the Commissioners have alluded to the fact, every day you pass by that Doyle Center, you see that symbol of the phoenix, because that phoenix symbolizes and kind of just really recognizes the fact that this community didn't give up and just lay down. We rebuilt this city into what you see today, and we will continue to rebuild, and we will continue to grow as we move forward. And so, I'm very thankful to be a part of this team of people who does that. So, that's all I have, except to remind you all that we do have an information meeting tomorrow night. This is our second of two information meetings for the general public that will be held at the Charles Doyle Convention Center relative to Building for Our Future. The city of Texas City will present what we are proposing, as well as answer questions and concerns from anybody in the public who wants to know about our Building for Your Future, for our future project. Outside of that, I know that right now, or earlier, when does the Easter egg hunt, is it already happened?
It's happening right now.
It's happening right now, so I'm going to shut up so y'all can go get you some Easter eggs, if y'all want to do that. But thank you, Nicole Miller, for doing a great job with that, and I will ask the staff if you have any announcements, any of you out there with city staff. Come on up.
I give you thank you, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So, we do have the Easter egg hunt happening at Carlos Gersa Park, so if you want a picture with the Easter Bunny, stop there on your way home. Our next adaptive recreation event is April the 26th at our Texas City Museum. Next, our Nestler Family Aquatic Center opens for the season on May the 3rd, and May the 5th, our summer camp registrations open. So, we're ready for summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was a great art show, too.
Yes, absolutely. Anybody else, city of Texas City?
All right.
Come on up to the mic. Got to get you on the record.
So, good evening again. I just wanted to remind everybody that on May the 3rd, we're having the greatest American cleanup this year to celebrate 250 years of America. And then, also, before that, on April the 24th, we have a Citizen Advisory Committee meeting at 5:30 PM at the City Hall Annex, and we meet with that committee at least once a quarter in order to find out what is going on in the community and what can we do better to meet the needs of the community. So, it is a public meeting, all are welcome. Again, that's April the 24th at 5:30, and it's also available online.
Thank you very much. Any other staff announcements? I did want to take a second to recognize and introduce our newest addition to our municipal family, if you would stand, Ms. Allison Lambert. Allison Lambert is now working aside of Mr. Joe Tumbelson. She is in our emergencies, our Deputy Emergency Manager with the city of Texas City. She comes to us with a wealth of experience in emergency management, and if you'd like to have a few words, you can do so at this time.
I'm.
At the microphone.
At the mic.
That's all right.
I'm really grateful to be here. I've gotten to meet a few of you, but it's nice to see so many people here, especially during the work week, showing up and being so engaged. And this is only my third week, but I feel really happy and just grateful to be here. So, look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Next time, I'll give you a little heads up before I put you on the spot. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Any others? Any others? All right.